Twenty twenty-five District Seven Board of Education meeting. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Bertles, here. Sanderson, here. Aheart. Bauer, here. Brianne, here. Carver. Johnson, here. Proctor, here. Paddy, here.
I'd like to welcome everybody to this evening's school board meeting. At this time, would please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
The United States of America and to a body for which it stands, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five agenda as it has been amended this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Brianne?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Paddy?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed session meeting held on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Brianne?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Paddy?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed session, closed special session meeting held on November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Bertles?
Yes.
Brianne?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Paddy?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, Dr. Duncan, will you provide your report?
Yes, so since the last time we met, our lesson hours here, lots been going on. The first thing I would like to do was, last Friday, was National Substitute Teacher Appreciation Day. We celebrate National Substitute Appreciation Day, Substitute Appreciation Day. Subbing is one of the most thankless and misunderstood roles in education. Many assume it's a walk in the park, but anyone who truly understands the work knows just how challenging and essential it is. Substitute teachers enjoy a wide range of lesson plans, build quick connections with kids they may never see again, navigate constantly evolving technology, and still work to provide students with the best educational experience possible. There are countless days when they are the ones keeping our district afloat, and I want to express my sincere appreciation. We would not be able to empower all students to achieve personal success without your dedication, flexibility, and resilience. Thank you for all that you do. So any self that's out there listening, thank you for coming to our rescue many days because you're so important to the operations of District Seven.
All right.
So I was able to get to some classrooms over the last couple of weeks. I just wanted to put a couple of highlights out there that I was able to see. I was at Lincoln Middle School, and I had the opportunity to see Maggie Dust, Ms. Hoxsey. They did a lesson on Charles and Boyle's Law, and never did I think I'd ever see kids so excited to learn about these topics. I was in the room, they could tell me what the teachers were teaching, they could tell me why it was important. It was a great experience. I also got to see Mrs. Driscoll, Mrs. Tucker at Lincoln, and what they are doing, they're what, they're kind of doing this model where after they do quizzes, after they do formative assessments, they pull the kids who are excelling in one room, and they pull the other students in another room who need just reteaching, so they're differentiating their instruction. And it was, it was just awesome lesson to watch. So that was really good experience for me. Also saw Ms. Palladino. Ms. Palladino is a teacher at Cassin's. I had never seen a second step lesson at the elementary level. Ms. Palladino was teaching about goal setting. And so I asked her principal, I said, is this normally what the second step lesson looks like? And she said, no. Like, she said, Ms. Palladino is taking it to a whole nother level. So all the kids were working on their devices in Canva, making theirselves their own little goal section. And so I just appreciated that she took the lesson and made it a little more impactful, more meaningful for her students. Mrs. Yancek Nelson, I had her doing the math lesson. It was, it was one of these moments where she walked up to the principal and said, hey, this is not going well. And I was like, what? I watched her with sixteen, seventeen kids. I'm gonna stand up so I can show you what she was doing until you can get a bit of visual. So imagine this class is right here. She has kids all along here, so she's lined up, they're planning, doing their addition and subtraction, they're getting it, and as soon as they got it, they go back to their table. And they're standing up, and they're working, and then she comes around, and she's teaching the kids who are kind of struggling a little bit, and then she says, go again! And she goes right back here again! And they're, she's lined up, and she's doing this, and she has her numbers, and they're learning this math lesson. All seventeen kids were engaged, they were excited, and I told her, I go, you have to have more confidence in yourself, because you were killing it. Every one of those students knew what was going on, and it was just so powerful, and I got excited, if you can't tell. And so, and so I just wanted to tell her that I was very impressed with that lesson, and just glad you're a part of District Seven. And the last one here, so for my Toy Story people, I was at Woodland on Friday, and they wanted to celebrate their principal, Dr. Andy Williams, and so what they had was Celebrate Andy Day. And so you guys who are Toy Story people know, when Andy comes in the room, what do the toys do? So throughout my whole day, so me and Dr. Williams walked the halls, and we visited several classrooms, and it was just so fun, because every kid that saw Dr. Williams, Andy's coming, Andy's coming, and they fall to their ground. I mean, kids are falling left and right, teachers are falling left and right, and it's just, it's just a good example of the climate and culture we have in our buildings. Dr. Williams is just beyond thrilled about it, and I was just glad that I was able to be there for it.
Awesome job, teachers.
So we had some coaches that received some recognition, Mr. Mark Hardishide, Illinois High School Soccer Coach Association Hall of Fame, Mr. Dave Leip, National High School Coach Association Tennis Coach of the Year, Mr. Kirk Schlitter, Illinois High School Tennis Coaches Association Girls Assistant Coach of the Year, and Mr. Michael Sabatino, National Assistant Coach of the Year Award. We will recognize these coaches in our January meeting, but I just wanted to put this up there, because this all kind of just happened over the last couple of weeks.
Awesome. Okay, they got applause up.
For our band, so the band is going to London in two thousand twenty-six. They will be in the London New Year's Day Parade. We just found out that Nine PBS will be airing the parade on January first at eleven-thirty. As we get more details, we'll send that out to the community so everybody can watch The Marching Panthers. And last, we have the superintendent shout out. What I've done, you know, since I've been in this seat is really wanting community members and teachers and stakeholders to send me stories of things that are happening in our buildings. I know there's so many amazing teachers, principals, custodians, secretaries, that are doing things to support our kids, and so here's November. The first group is Ms. Gray and Ms. Jackson. The person who's recognizing, so I want to shout out Ms. Gray and Ms. Jackson, the Student Council sponsors and EHS Student Council. They spent many hours after school the past two Tuesdays going to nearby neighborhoods to pass out collection bags for donations for the Glenette Pantry, picking up items and delivering hundreds of items to the Glenette Pantry. Our community did not disappoint and was very giving and supportive of their canned food drive. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gray and Mrs. Jackson. This fellow is here in the, in the room, I believe, somewhere, maybe he's out in the cafeteria. How you doing, Mr. Shooty? So Mr. Shooty, Mr. Shooty, I want to recognize him for his outstanding commitment and contributions in Lincoln Cross Country Program. Mark constantly goes above and beyond in his work with the team, volunteering his evenings and weekends to attend events, promptly communicating with parents about schedule changes, additional meets and new race times, and often uses his own resources to ensure our student athletes have the best possible experience. He brings great energy to practice, makes training fun, and is always the team's loudest and most enthusiastic supporter. Thanks, Mr. Shooty, for all that you do. So this guy, Mr. Joey Veriteer, he is a new teacher at District Seven. I'd heard a lot about this guy, just really doing amazing things at FFA and the Ag program at the high school. And so I just was at the high school on Friday, and I walked in, I see this guy who looks like he's probably twenty-three years old, and he is just high-fiving kids, welcoming them to the classroom. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and it was Joey. And so this is what the person nominated Joey. My son is in Mr. B's Horticulture Class and is thriving this year. Mr. B is engaging with all of his kids, he goes out of his way to get and keep the kids excited, engaged, and learning. My son has never been one to jump out of bed and get to school until this year. I'm gonna repeat that. My son has never been one to jump out of bed and get to school until this year. That is a big statement for a high school kid to say that. Mr. B stays, stays on the kids about their grades in other classes as well. My son has struggled all year with geometry, but Mr. B tries to help him and keeps encouraging him. He was excited for Mason today when he received a better grade on the test. This is Mr. B's first year teaching at Edwardsville School District, and I believe teaching, and we hope he has a long career in our district. Thank you, Mr. Veriteer. So we have Mr. Matt Sedaris. My kids grew up going to Midway, Warden, and now Lincoln in EHS. It was really hard leaving Midway and Warden, as they are fantastic schools with amazing teachers. Can we give it up for Midway and Warden, please? I feel like I could honestly shout out almost every one of my kids' teachers. This email though is from Mr. Sedaris, the principal at Midway. He's always been easily approachable, he takes the time to learn families, and not only that, but remembers us years later. He always says hi when we're out in public and comes across, and we come across each other. My kids always enjoyed having him, he's kind, promotes kindness and respectful behavior with the kids. Even now as they're freshmen, my daughter still says he was the best. We did have to forgive the fact that he is a Cubs fan. Thank you, Mr. Sedaris, for all you do. The next one we have is Ms. Gladys Nelson. Ms. Gladys Nelson is a school nurse at Hamel. She coordinates all of the Christmas donations for needy families across the whole district. This is a huge undertaking and requires a lot of coordination with families, agencies and organizations, and a lot of paperwork. Mrs. Gladys Nelson is very worthy of a shout out, in my opinion. Thank you, Ms. Gladys Nelson. The next three we have is Mrs. Lynn, Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Happy. These are the softball coaches at Liberty. My daughter has been a part of their softball program in the middle school, and every year I'm more impressed by their composure, fairness, and ability to hold our girls accountable but still respected and loved by our girls. The middle school softball season is insane, fast and fierce. They dedicate so much time to our girls and then pour more into developing our daughters with the high school softball program. They make our program at District Seven a one of a kind and clearly works so well together. They make it look easy and have navigated some tough stuff and really want them to know how much they're appreciated. Thank you, Mrs. Lynn, Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Happy. And last but not least, Mrs. Sarah Chapman. My sophomore has her for honors chemistry. Mrs. Chapman provides a detailed weekly email to parents, highlighting the week's assignments, activities, and expectations. This allows me to check in with my child's progress and keep engaged in her learning. In my students' words, Mrs. Chapman conducts experiments and creates models so that we can explore new concepts firsthand. You can tell it's always important to her and that her students comprehend the material. I like that she does so much to make learning chemistry interesting and fun. Thank you, Mrs. Chapman. So again, anybody who wants to make your recommendations, send me a shout out, just send me an email with the teacher's name and why you believe they're deserving of it, and then they will be recognized in our December meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. At this time, Claire Johnson will provide the junior student representative report.
Good evening. This month was full of productivity and growth throughout all of our elementary and middle schools. I'd like to start off by thanking the district for allowing Josie and I to participate in the Student Board Member IASV Conference this past weekend. It was an incredible experience, and I learned so much about leadership, and I was able to make many valuable connections with other student representatives, as well as adult board members and superintendents from different districts across Illinois. Attention McClure parents, save the date for Kids Night Out on Friday, December fifth from six-thirty to eight-thirty. Hamel families, come cheer on your Huskies tomorrow, November twenty-fifth, as they participate in their first ever Turkey Trot. For more information, find it on the Hamel website. Cassin's families, make sure not to miss the fifth grade band and orchestra, along with the fourth and fifth grade choir performances on Monday, December ninth. The RSVP link can be found on Cassin's website. Several grades of District Seven students had a great field trip to the SIUE Women's Basketball Education Day. They enjoyed seeing a great game and cheering on our local team. Thank you, SIUE, for hosting us and making it a memorable day for all of our students. Finally, calling all young authors in elementary schools. It's never too early to start brainstorming your next creative masterpiece. Books for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six competition are due Friday, February sixth. For more information, check on your school's website.
Awesome. At this time, Josie Proctor will provide the senior student representative report.
Thank you. Tiger marching band and color guard performed at the Bands of America Grand National Championship in Indianapolis. They performed their piece in a Garden of Dreams. Congratulations to all of our participants. EHS Model UN spent two days at McHenry University, where they debated important global topics with other high schools in the area. They debated topics like cybersecurity and ethical implications of human gene editing. Congratulations to these students in taking advantage of this amazing opportunity. German Honor Society delivered nine hundred four pairs of new socks to the Glenette Pantry as part of their annual Soctoberfest competition. They competed with French, Spanish, and ASL and won the competition. On November twenty-second, seventy-six EHS band, choir, and orchestra students represented our school at the ILMEA All District Music Festival. Thank you for representing our school. Girls' basketball opened the season with a win against Calhoun. The game was fifty-seven to forty, and the JV team won their game as well. Congratulations to the girls' swim and dive team on placing eleventh at the IHSA State Championship. They placed eighth in the two-hundred relay and the two-hundred and in the two-hundred free relay, and thirteenth in the four-hundred free relay. Grace Erdl finished eleventh in the fifty free, and Scout Jackson placed ninth in the hundred back. During Edwardsville Spring Signing Day, EHS had twelve students who signed their letters of intent to continue their academic and athletic careers at the next level. Congratulations. Edwardsville Girls' Cross Country finished their season at the IHSA State Meet after they finished eighth, matching the highest finish in the school history for the second year. Olivia Heron and Zach Majors are the EHS Students of the Month. Students of the Month is given to students who demonstrate raw attributes and work to make, make EHS a better place. The Mind Matters Club, or M&amp;M, at EHS hosted the Grandparents Gala for the first time ever on the fifteenth. They had a silent auction, red carpet, The Price is Right, Crumble Cookies, and many other food options. They, the event generated a total revenue of three thousand dollars. M&amp;M is hoping to hold this gala next year with even bigger and grander plans. Later tonight, you guys are going to hear a presentation from the Student Advisory Board. This group has been vital in helping make decisions for the board, and they have a really great presentation prepared for you guys. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, at this time, does any board member have a report to share? I do. Okay, this past weekend, I was honored to, Alma Carver and I both went to the Joint Annual Conference up in Chicago, where the Illinois Association of School Boards, along with Illinois Association of School Administrators, and the other one, Illinois Association of School Business Officers or Officials. It's why they call it joint, because all those various organizations come together. It was a great opportunity to learn topics ranging just from a school board perspective, that anything that, that could help, you know, sort of provide oversight and, and help us understand sort of best practices and connect with other boards and, and other administrators across the state. Great opportunity, and thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it and glad, glad I had the opportunity to go. So highly encourage everybody to try to make an effort to go next year, because it was, it was, is very beneficial. So that's, that's my report. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. So we are entering the section of the meeting where we recognize special guests, students who have excelled and provide the opportunity for visitors to address the school board. At this time, I'd like to introduce Donnie Gunter, Principal of Leclerc Elementary, and Matthew Sedaris, Principal of Midway Elementary, who will recognize their Students of the Month for October.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duncan and Board of Education. I would like to welcome Kazaya McKissick up here. She is one of our amazing Midway Wolves. Come on up, Kazaya. So one of our school-wide expectations at Midway is helping others. That's the H in our Howl Expectations, and she does an excellent job of that. But the really impressive thing is she doesn't do it to get noticed, or to get attention, or to get a Howl ticket. She does it because she enjoys it. She genuinely cares for the other kids that she's in school with. If she sees a friend that's on the playground who's playing by themselves, she always invites them to play with her and her friends. And sometimes I, you know, you don't see a kiddo with as good of manners as Kazaya. She's always saying thank you, she's always saying please, she's always just showing off her best behavior. So I am so glad to be recognizing her as one of the District Seven students that's being recognized by the Board of Education.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call my friend Grayson Jackson up here to the front. Grayson, come see me. Hi, buddy. Everybody, this is my friend Grayson. Can you say hi, Grayson?
Hi, Grayson.
Grayson, say hi, everybody. So my friend Grayson, I had to make some notes, because I don't want to leave anything out. My friend Grayson is being celebrated tonight as one of our outstanding second graders. If you can't tell, my friend Grayson brings tremendous enthusiasm and positivity to Leclerc Elementary every single day. He has a love for numbers and time, always helping keep his class on schedule. Grayson, what time is it?
I don't know.
You want to tell them what mine? What's mine say? What does my watch say?
That is twenty-two PM.
He loves telling time. So Grayson is also known for his cheerful, perfect, when things are going really, really well. His hard work, encouragement of others, big smile, and legendary high fives make our school a brighter place. We're incredibly proud of Grayson and the progress that he continues to make. He reminds us daily that learning can be and should be joyful, focused, and in his words, perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, give it up for our friend Grayson Jackson.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Michael Corey, Principal of Lincoln Middle School, who will recognize the Lincoln Middle School Cross Country Team for their accomplishments.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for having us here tonight. Normally, this is part where I get really excited to come up here and speak about our student athletes. It's the, my favorite thing to do. But the guy I'm about to bring up here is gonna do that far better than me, and probably far longer than me, so. I'm gonna leave all the good words for him, but I would like to recognize our head coach, Mark Shooty, tonight. And, and not to take too much of what Dr. Duncan said already, but when, when we talk about teachers, coaches, staff in this district who truly empower each of our students, each of our students, to achieve personal success, it's this guy right here. Those of you who have had a kid go through our Cross Country Program in this district, no matter the building you're at, you know exactly how dedicated he is to not only our programs but our kids. So very excited, very honored, very pleased to welcome our head Cross Country Coach, Mark Shooty. Thank you very much. This is, this is great. I feel like I'm getting so many compliments tonight, I'm so glad I came. I guess while I'm here, I guess we should probably celebrate these guys, too. I want to start off by thanking Dr. Duncan and the Board of Education for inviting us to celebrate just a phenomenal year for our athletes. Both Lincoln and Liberties joining us, Liberties coming in, have had an incredible year. One hundred and forty, one hundred and forty schools, that's how many participate in the large school division in Illinois for cross country. So when you hear about these numbers, it's truly impressive. We compete against schools from Chicago all the way down to Southern Illinois. And what we did at the Lincoln level was absolutely historic and something that I'm so proud of what these kids have done. Out of a hundred and eighty schools, although we're not recognizing our boys' team tonight, they didn't earn a state trophy, I do want to give them a shout out. They actually scored enough points to place sixth out of a hundred and eighty teams in the state of Illinois. However, the tiebreaker did not go in our favor, so we ended up seventh place, which is the third highest program finish in Lincoln history. So definitely a shout out to our Lincoln boys first and foremost. But you will see, we have our full team here with him, or at least members of our boys' team with him, to help not only to celebrate him, but to also celebrate the accomplishments of the boys' program overall. Not to be outdone, our girls' program, out of a hundred and eighty teams, tied for the best finish in program history, placing third in the state of Illinois. And we had two individuals place all state in our girls' program. To back up, Preston's time places him second all time for Lincoln Middle School. Abby Goddard placed all state. Abby finished twelfth with a time of twelve oh four. That is the third fastest recorded time in Lincoln history, along with Audrey Floyd, who also placed all state. She ran twenty-first with a time of twelve eleven, and that places her fourth all time in the history of Lincoln. However, cross country is a beautiful sport, because it's not just an individual sport, it is a team sport, and it's the great teams that are really remembered. We were fortunate enough this last week to go on a few podcasts. What a cool experience for our middle schoolers to be able to talk about something they feel passionate about. And Coach Leip asked me to describe our team, and I said, our team is special for three reasons. First of all, they are so friendly. If you know these kids, they are the nicest group of athletes that I could ever imagine, and we are so fortunate enough to have seventy-five students on our Lincoln Cross Country Team, and it's in large part because of the culture and the environment that these students have set. The second word that we would use to describe them is consistent. First week of June, they come out every single day, seven in the morning. Our, there's a slogan that summer miles equal October smiles. We don't start in August, we start in June. So in order to accomplish what this team has accomplished, these students have ran in the heat, they've ran at seven in the morning, every morning in the summertime, they've ran in conditions when they've been excited to show up, and they've ran in conditions when they weren't excited to show up. But they are consistent throughout. The third is perhaps what I'm most proud, they are fearless. This team set huge goals. From the very beginning, they were special, but their goals were not only to be great on the course. They embraced leadership. When I talk to our eighth graders about setting a culture, our school theme is building our legacy, when I talk to our eighth graders about building our legacy, they didn't take that as a burden or even a challenge. They took that as something that they wanted to embrace. They were so excited from day one to involve all of our incoming sixth graders into the program. And if there's one thing that this team truly stands out about, is that their legacy has absolutely been built, been built. They are absolutely fearless, and my hat goes off to them. I can't imagine being in a role when I was in middle school and taking that on as gracefully and as mature as what they've done. So. So, huge round of applause to our Lincoln team. I will call their names down because, like I said, it's a team sport, and I want to make sure that all of our students, I typed them up, I don't want to miss anybody. So we will have them come down. Before I do that, I definitely need to say thank you to our parents. The support that you show them, along with the coaching staff, is second to none. I need to give a huge shout-out to our district administration, Mr. Corey, Mrs. Anderson, of course, our athletic director, Mrs. Duncan. At the district level, Amy Biscolo has been excellent in making sure that our opportunities are provided to compete. And, of course, I don't see them, but I know they're there, we have the greatest assistant coaches ever. They are the backbone of the team, Coach Hoakley and Coach Bell. I think half of the girls that actually do this sport do it because of our great assistant coaches. They are the absolute backbone of our team. And then, of course, to our athletes. Like I said, legacy's been built. This will be a team that will go down in history for Lincoln, not just for how competitive they are, but also for how they treated one another and the culture that they built. So, for the boys, we have Preston Brown. And on the girls' side, we have Abby Goddard. Audrey Floyd could not attend tonight, however, she was a big part of our team. Zoe Scroggins. Emery Lawson. Kennedy Jumper. Betty Cattigan. Violet Schaefer. These are the students that ran and competed at the state level. However, they trained with our alternates who are just as important. Charlotte Hanson. Claire Snyder. Pierre Patel. Annabelle Serco. And finally, Audrey Carlos. And I did it, I talked so long, half these guys are signing letters of intent to run in college already. But I do appreciate it, thank you guys very much.
A lot of, a lot of clinking going on there. Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Ashley Walsh, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director for Liberty Middle School, who will recognize the Liberty Middle School Cross Country Team for their accomplishments.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the board for allowing us to present. I had to check my text messages because the hype around this boys' cross-country team started all the way back in September, September 13th, when I got my first text message from Coach Trey telling me that this team was something to watch out for, this team was a special team. And the hype continued. Every Saturday morning, I would get a text from Coach Trey with the results, or I'd be secretly scrolling and watching the live feed so that I could see how well these, this team was doing. And not only are they fantastic athletes, but they are also fantastic members of our school and leaders in our school, and we're just so proud of them. So without further ado, I'll let Coach Trey Hardeman talk a little bit more about all their individual accomplishments.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to just, just recognize these amazing athletes and all they do. They work incredibly hard to do the things that they have an opportunity to do every single Saturday throughout the year. And so we are incredibly proud of them, and just want to say thank you for recognizing them. As you said, my name is Trey Hardeman, and I have the honor of getting to serve as one of the coaches for Liberty Middle School. Coach Katie Dow Arnold, she couldn't be here tonight, but she is our head coach, and so I get to primarily work with the boys. But first and foremost, I want to recognize Emily Stahlheber, because she is one of two ladies who qualified for the state meet for our Liberty Girls XC team. Riley could not be here tonight, but I'm going to just hype up Emily really fast because she's going to hate every second of this. But her hard work and determination this year has been short of no one else. She, at the very beginning of the year, she had a goal to make the state meet, and she knew, and we knew, that it was going to be a challenge. We knew it was going to be very difficult, just because the talent level is just so high right now in middle school cross-country. And so she had a goal at the very beginning of the year, and she kept working, she never complained, she constantly was at practice. Running is hard, because every other sport, they do running for punishment, we do running for fun, that's the sport that we're in. And so every day is difficult, but every day she showed up, had a good attitude, or at least showed me that she had a good attitude, maybe at home Mom and Dad figured out something else. But she did an incredible job, and honestly, all of her goals were met when she qualified at the sectional meet for the state meet, and I could not be more proud of her. So can we recognize her real fast? And so Emily, not only did she qualify for the state meet, but she actually ran a PR at the state meet, running 12:58 for the two-mile, which is a huge accomplishment, and so super excited for her. She continues running cross-country in the high school level. She is going to do amazing things. But now on to the boys. The boys, they worked incredibly hard, similar to Emily and Riley, they started in the summer. And as Ms. Walsh mentioned, we, we did kind of start to see that there was something special. Last year, we were able to finish runner-up at the state meet. And so there was a lot of expectations, a lot of our boys got to experience that last year. And so it kind of started really early, that they were, they were really wanting to work hard, they were hungry, and there were a lot of goals for this team, a lot of goals. Some that was like, okay, hey, we need to relax just a little bit because it's a long season, we're not going to be able to figure this out tomorrow, we need to take it day by day. But, and this, this team had a lot of goals, but what I am most proud of, for this team specifically, is the relationships that this team had. This is a very tight-knit group of students, and what's even, maybe even more incredible is the fact that, and I don't know if Mark mentioned this, but just the Liberty and Lincoln kind of connection with the athletes, and the fact that this gets to carry on to the high school level, and the relationships that were built. But then on top of that, for our group of boys, just the character that they exhibit is just, is so incredible to watch every single meet, and the way that they've carried themselves, and the way that they carried themselves in winning, and the way they carried themselves in losing. And so just, all of the, just, I just want to praise them as much as humanly possible. They were able to bring home a lot of hardware this year. They won the Mascota Kickoff, which was the very first meet of the year, then they followed that by winning the Granite City Invitational. Then they won two of the bigger meets in the state of Illinois, in the Parkside Invitational, and then the Dunlap Invitational, which is, which are massive. Those, those two meets are typically won by the Northern Chicago schools, and we were able to be victorious in those, and so they were super proud of that. And then also, they were sectional champions. Evan Thompson was the individual sectional champion, running, I think it was 10:35.9, which he is going to probably, for the rest of his life, hate that time, because it means he's .8 off of the school record. But, I might just give it to him, I don't know. It was 2014, it doesn't, it doesn't matter anymore. But I, but also, our, our boys, Evan Thompson, when he finished, he finished third place at the state meet. And I, I think it, it, he needs to be recognized for a lot of reasons. One, his character, but two, that's the highest place for any Liberty Middle School cross-country runner of all time, which is super incredible. Ran 10:46, and did an incredible job, ran a great race, and just the reality of his hard work all year, it just needs to be recognized. But also, at that same state meet, we had another, so Evan was obviously All-State, we had another All-Stater in Harrison Jackstat. At the beginning of the year, Harrison was like, "Hey, Coach, what do I need to do?" And I was like, "Hey, I need you to be All-State, that's what I need from you." And he looked at me with like deer in a headlights a little bit, but we just kept working, and he continued to work hard, continued to do, just to do the hard work of running. And so he met his goals, and at the state meet, he finished 19th, and was also an All-State runner. Can we collab for them really fast? Because they did amazing. And then our, our boys team, actually, actually, we went back-to-back for runner-ups, so our boys team, we finished second at the state meet, just a huge accomplishment. As I was looking back, I, I'm kind of like a psycho when it comes to running, and I pay attention to all the different statistics and all the different things. Not only is that like the highest finish for Liberty Middle School, but it's also like one of the higher finishes all-time for a Southern Indiana, Southern Illinois school to finish. Chicago typically takes the crown in some capacity, but I know that our boys are knocking on the door, and I cannot wait to see them take it at the next level. And so we are super proud of them. I do want to say this, sports, sports have a way of humbling you and teaching you many lessons, lessons that you want, lessons that you didn't want but had been, were forced to learn. But as their coach, I have watched you. I've watched you clearly, and I want you guys to know that they have taught me a lot. And so as they are raising, as we're raising up the next generation of runners, and people, and just good citizens, man, we could not be more proud of all of you. So I want to recognize each of our, our boys, also Emily, so Emily Stahlheber, you can make your way that direction. Yes, give it up for her. Good job, buddy. Evan Thompson. Evan Thompson, good job dude. Harrison Jackstat. Gage Guzwell. Luc Dino. Nolan Lydican. Adam Kirk. Jack Fields. Charlie Shraggy. And Cooper Atchison. Thank you guys.
Awesome job.
Okay, at this time, the board has set aside time for anyone wishing to address the board. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Thank you. Okay, would any board member like to remove any consent agenda items for separate action? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items as recommended this evening.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carrie, please call and roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Bertles?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Paddy?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. At this time, I'd like to welcome members of the Superintendent Student Advisory to, who will present to the board about their committee.
Hi, everybody. I'm Malika Hammer, and I'm the President of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board. First, I'd like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. We're just here to talk about who we are, what our purpose is, what our goals are, what we're planning to do, and what we've done before. So I'll hand it off to our Vice President to talk about our purpose.
Hi, everybody. My name is Aubrey Hollis. I am a senior at EHS High School. This is my third year on this board, and this year I have the honor of being Vice President. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit just about our purpose. So, the slide says, "Our purpose is to provide student feedback and input on district projects to bring the student perspective to the consideration of the superintendent and the district. We strive to improve the district experience for all students." So, this means like, we've helped with the bathroom design, like, we split the sinks, so instead of walking around the sink, we walk through the sinks. And you'll hear more about other things that we've done from my fellow board members, but yeah, that's our purpose.
So we have three main goals that we always move toward achieving when we are working. So our first goal is to enhance communication between the students and the superintendent and the admin. We believe it's important to bring the student perspective to the superintendent and admin because it creates, it gives the students an opportunity to give feedback to the people who are making decisions for our district, and we really value that. Our second main goal is to improve the district experience for all students. We do this by creating many opportunities, which we will talk about later in the slideshow, and we also strive to create a positive atmosphere and an inclusive atmosphere across the district. And our three, third main goal is to represent the district and its students. We represent the district at many different events, which my fellow board members will talk about later in the presentation. And we represent the students by trying to gain as much input and also selecting a diverse group of students who have diverse experiences to give input to, for, to the superintendent.
Good evening. My name is Aurora. I'm a senior at EHS. This is my third year on the board, and this year I'm serving as event coordinator. I'm here to provide an update on the parking spot painting project. I was one of the founding members for this project last year, and last year we had 88 students paint their parking spots, and we were able to donate $2,200 to Special Olympics. This year, the project continued and expanded. We had 121 students paint their parking spots and donated $3,025 to Special Olympics. This year, six teachers also participated, and we have made plans to continue the project for next year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma. I'm a senior. This is my second year on the board, and I'm going to talk about the Ice Cream Social. This was our first time having it and hosting it at Edersville. We invited all of the officers from every, we have hundreds of clubs at Edersville, and we really wanted to get it out there for all the new students. And this covers, we really, we really strive to be inclusive and get people involved in Edersville, and so we invited all the new people to the district and all the freshmen to really get involved and find a place so they can call home.
Hi, my name's Ella Carter. I'm a senior, and this is my third year on the board. So I was going to talk a little bit about like what we've done in the past and our input on some of the district projects. So one of the main things last year is we worked with the superintendent to bring our feedback and the feedback from other students on the bathroom design. So we spent a lot of time going through blueprints, going through, you know, possible concerns and questions that other students may have had, and worked our hardest to provide the best possible bathrooms that we could. We even went out to different schools, so we went over, a couple of us went over to St. Louis to see how other schools were implementing the project, and saw that it was actually working really well. And so we brought that feedback back to the students, and we're like, "Hey, what do you think about this? This is how this school did it." And they really appreciated hearing that it's working well for other schools. We also represent District 7 in a lot of community events. This year, we represented the district at Unity Fest over in Leclerc Park. We've done parades in the past and had all the mascots out there greeting the kids and rode on the float. And we've also done District 7 videos, so we've talked about like the student experience and how everyone's getting along with the new commons and everything. Alright, and so some other things that we've done is we're really, really big on volunteering in our group. We've helped with District 7 job fairs in the past, whether that's just greeting people and welcoming them in, or helping them get to their interview, or serving cookies and punch. We've also helped at kindergarten orientations and helping watch some of the littles and just making sure that everyone feels welcomed and has a place in our district. And then I'm going to hand this over to Andrew to talk a little bit about the Lincoln Walk Through this year.
So my name's Andrew McKee. I'm a senior at EHS. This is my second year on the board.
Uh, this is my second year on the board. And like Ella said, we had the opportunity to work the Lincoln Walk Through. So at the beginning of the year, right when the new, uh, addition to Lincoln was done, we were able to work with, uh, district administration and other Lincoln student representatives to give tours back to the community along to, along with answering questions that we have from a student's perspective, um, that gives a unique, different look on how it would have affected our experience when we were in middle school.
Hi, my name is Ally Beck. Um, I'm a sophomore at Edersville High School and this is my first year on the superintendent, superintendent student advisory board. Um, and I'm kind of here just to talk about our future plans. So we want to get more input from students and parents, um, throughout the entire district because we're not an EHS group, we're a District Seven group. So, um, we are going to begin, we hope to begin a lunch table where some of us sit a couple of times a week, um, for recommendations from students, um, as what we should talk about at our meetings, issues that they think have arisen or how they think that we can make, um, District Seven a better place to be. Also, we, um, I think Nora's going to talk a little bit more about it later, but, um, we have Google forums where they are sent out to teachers and then there's a different one that is sent out to, that will be sent out to the students, um, as for recommendations of what to talk about. Um, and also we are planning to meet with, um, the house council from the middle school. They are the eight, um, leaders that have been selected by administration to, um, lead their house through the house system. And, um, we are hoping to talk to them because they are some of the strongest leaders from the middle schools to kind of get more feedback from, um, what it's like at the middle school. Same point. So, thank you.
All right. Now I'd just like to introduce, um, our amazing team. We have an amazing team with a lot of diverse experiences. Some of us are new to the district, some of us immigrated here, um, some of us are in band, drama club, sports, and we value having a diverse group to bring all perspectives and represent the district fully. So I'm Malika Hammer. I'm the president and Aubrey Hollis is our vice president. Our secretary is Kate Dorsey. Our event coordinator is Aurora Wilhelm. And then we have Sophia Antonini, Schaefer Bates, Ally Beck, Emma Birkenmeyer, Ella Carter, Darby Kristen, Catherine Conklin, who's not here today, Antonella Deavilla, Reese Garavalia, Kaylee Hostchild, who's also not here today, Xavier Humphrey, who's also not here today, Claire Johnson, Andrew McKee, Josie Proctor, Evelyn Brown, who's not here today, Mia Dilts, also not here today, Nora Starbuck, and Liv Warner.
Thank you all for listening and we look forward to working towards making the district experience better. Attached to the slide is a QR code that people can use to submit any suggestions or issues that we should discuss in the student advisory board. And any board members that would maybe like to sit in and join any of our meetings, just contact one of us, the student advisory or Dr. Duncan.
Thank you. Awesome job.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to introduce Jean Bernstein, Director of Educational Partnerships with Solution Tree, who will recognize Leclerc Elementary School. Did I say that right, Bernstein?
Bernstein, good.
Oh, perfect. Awesome. Wow. Yay. Got it.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Dr. Duncan and members of the board. Thank you for having me here. Um, I am Jean Bernstein, um, and I represent Illinois and Wisconsin for Solution Tree. And I work with schools and school districts in both of those states. I used to cover Missouri too, so, uh, came down here quite a bit. Um, I have the pleasure of working with your district, uh, as they constantly work to provide the best resources and education for your students. When a school like Leclerc shifts their focus to what is most important, learning rather than teaching, collaboration and results, the outcomes are bound to be great. I had the pleasure of walking through the school today, um, it was, and seeing what an amazing school it is. It was so impressive. I mentioned that when I think of a great school or where I would want my kids and now my grandkids to go, that's what I want, that's what I envision. And it was just an amazing, um, experience. So thank you for that. So with this, with this approach to learning, which is what Solution Tree promotes, Leclerc will continue to achieve even more. Um, from determining essential standards and common formative assessments to providing timely targeted interventions and, um, the team at Leclerc is working collectively and collaboratively to ensure all students' needs are met and truly all means all, every single student there. Professional learning community, communities also provide job, job embedded learning for the staff to reinforce the collaborative culture of a PLC, professional learning community. Um, collaboration represents a systematic process in which teachers work. It's not that they're doing, they're changing what they do, it's just how they do it so that it makes sense. Um, during this process, they, teachers work together independently, interdependently, sorry, interdependently to impact their classroom practices in ways that will lead to better results for their students, for their team and for their school. In Illinois, Leclerc is one of only 25 elementary schools that have this designation. Um, the majority of them, 80% of them are up in the northern suburbs and area of up there. Um, so there's only, I think, four, Tara, did we determine about four down in this area? So they're fairly unique. We have some other designations, but nothing like a model PLC. This, the district is committed to this work and Leclerc has just excelled in that work. Um, and I know we have other schools working towards this designation. So I look forward to coming back and celebrating with you. I did bring you some cookies. I bring cookies to celebrate because you can't have a celebration without food. And I want to congratulate the stellar team at Leclerc for this very hard work. So, thank you.
The Leclerc team, can you guys come on up? It's probably one of the biggest trophies I've seen. How you doing tonight? Need a stand-up stretch or anything? You ready to go? Is that a yes? You ready to go?
We're ready to go.
All right. Very good. So are we. Hi, team, you ready? All right. So, uh, we're going to talk a little bit and build upon what Jean talked about, uh, with the Leclerc team. And so we're super excited to be here tonight. Uh, also want to thank Dr. Duncan and the Board of Education for allowing us the time to come up and brag on our school tonight. Uh, I want to start by allowing our guiding coalition members to introduce themselves. Donnie Gunter, principal at Leclerc Elementary.
Taryn Cross, second grade teacher.
Sarah Jackson, special education teacher for the SEL program.
Lauren Mays, I'm the school psychologist at Leclerc.
Kailin Perez, first grade teacher.
Carrie Ivancevich, assistant principal.
Kylie Kuba, kindergarten.
I'm Emery, first grade.
This is Emery. Three claps for Emery tonight. One, two, three, that's right, beautiful. All right. So Emery, uh, little backstory real quick. So, um, Emery is one of our students at Leclerc Elementary and in our weekend update, I wanted to put it in there because, uh, and let all of our families know that we were being celebrated tonight and that we were giving a presentation. Uh, this model PLC status is not just me, it's not just our, uh, staff, it's not just the teachers, it's also our families and our students. And Emery and her mom showed up tonight and so we thought, why not throw her in the middle of it? She makes us all look really adorable, so we're going to keep Emery up here. Right, Emery? She's like, yeah. All right. So, uh, we'll go ahead and get started with this. Uh, so the recognition as a model PLC school, uh, is something that we were, uh, working for, um, for a little while here. And so we really want to talk tonight about what that means. And so we're here tonight to talk about becoming District Seven's first model PLC school and we're excited to provide an overview of what that means. At Leclerc Elementary, professional learning communities are not just a meeting. We have it three o'clock on Wednesdays, they are a way of life. A model PLC school is nationally recognized for consistently implementing the PLC framework with fidelity, collaboration, data-driven decision-making and results-oriented practice. It reflects our school-wide culture, not individual teacher practice, where collective responsibility, shared goals and continuous improvement are embedded into everyday work. It creates a shared ownership of student outcomes rather than isolated classrooms or silos. Teachers have scheduled protected time to collaborate, analyze results, plan intervention, enrichments and share their instructional practices. The work increases teacher clarity, instructional alignment and consistency, which translates into better student experiences. Model PLC schools breaks down into two things. You show strong gains in both academic achievement and school culture, something I know you've heard about several times tonight. The model designation validates that our practices are directly impacting students' success and that they are sustainable and replicable. At Leclerc Elementary, our foundation begins and ends with relationships, belonging and shared ownership. We have intentionally cultivated a culture where every student is known, every staff member is valued and every family partner is welcomed. Our motto reflects our mindset that every student can learn at high levels and we will do whatever it takes to ensure that happens. Decision-making is collaborative, student-centered and aligned to collective responsibility rather than that individual practice. Staff morale and teamwork remains strong because we celebrate wins, examine challenges openly and we focus on progress and not perfection. This team is not a committee, the team before you is the leadership engine of our professional learning community. Our guiding coalition, just a little bit of a picture into our trophy. Our guiding coalition was fortunate to attend a PLC training in Charlotte where we collaborated deeply around the mission, vision, values and goals of high-functioning PLCs. We analyzed our students, our school's current reality honestly and transparently. We built shared agreements based on instruction, data and intervention. And we established systems for continuous cycles of improvement, not isolated initiatives. The experience strengthened our trust, alignment and energy toward a unified instructional identity at Leclerc Elementary. We sat down and we decided that this is one of the things that we wanted. The front of that trophy talks about how Leclerc Elementary was voted the number one school in the whole world. Why are you laughing? So it's a title that we definitely gave to ourselves. Again, why are you laughing? So I want you to understand, when you look at this from a principal's perspective, when you look at this from a staff perspective, from a parent's perspective, from a student's perspective, don't you want the best? It's a question, don't you want the best? I want the best, right? I want to be able to work in a school, I want to be able to send my kid to school, I want to be a kid, I want to be a teacher at a building who is the number one out of all of the schools. And if you don't believe it, how are you going to achieve it? So that's something that we set out in front of our people. We came back, we had this trophy, it was beautifully made and found six years ago in a dark basement somewhere and we were able to slap this certificate on the front of it. And today, when people come in, they say, were you really voted that? Are you really the best school? And again, if we believe it, why can't we be it? Right? So, back in August of 2024, our curriculum director, Mrs. Tara Fox, was able to connect us with Clara Davis-Sale from Solution Tree. She led several sessions of professional development and went beyond the call to help answer questions and be a sounding board for our team. As a result of that time together, our entire staff crafted the document that sits before you and includes a living vision and collective commitments that guide decisions, coaching, schedules, professional development and most of all, collaboration. Our vision and collective commitments center on learning for all, not teaching for all, collaboration over isolation, evidence over opinion and results over intention. We are proud that Leclerc was able to represent District Seven as the first model PLC school. This recognition shows that we are not just improving, we are leading. And most importantly, this accomplishment belongs to our entire staff, our students and our families who trust and partner with us. As we flip into the series of next slides, these slides look at a very important section of our five essential survey. The five essential survey is a yearly questionnaire that asks students, sorry, teachers and families about their experiences at school. It helps us to understand how the school is doing, not just academically, but in the day-to-day environment that students learn in. The survey looks at three key areas that research shows are essential for a strong and successful school. Effective leadership, is the school well organized and headed into a positive direction? Collaborative teachers, do teachers work well together and support each other? And number three, involved families, do families feel connected and welcomed at school? In short, the five essential survey tells us how well our school community is working together and where we can keep growing. It helps guide decisions so that we can create the best learning environment possible for each student. So, when we receive this information back from our five essential survey, I just included a few slides that really speak to the culture at Leclerc Elementary. And the first question that came back to us says, uh, this went out to teachers only, do you feel that other teachers take responsibility for improving the school? So we're looking for growth and in this question, when you look at nearly all or most and you add those up, 97% of our teachers feel that other teachers take responsibility for improving the school. It's a really great number, isn't it? Here's the second one. Also pitched to teachers, do you feel that other teachers in the school feel responsible to help each other do their best? Nearly all or most adds up to 100%. And again, oh, go back one for me, would you? If you look at the 2024, uh, the green bar right in the center, you'll see the shift from 2024 to 2025. From about half, you feel like, uh, you know, about half feel responsible to help each other do their best, you'll notice that shift there from 24 to 25. The next slide says, do you feel that other teachers in the school feel responsible that all students learn? This is the collective efficacy piece. Those just aren't my students. When a student walks through the door at Leclerc Elementary, that student is our student. Do other teachers in the school feel responsible at all students learn? If you add up most and nearly all, you get 100%. Another piece of data says, teachers report that they would recommend this school to parents seeking a place for their child. Again, you can notice the shift from 24 to 25. And again, when you add up the strongly agrees and the agrees, you get, say it with me, 100%. I say that with a smile because, look at this table, there's a lot of pride to be had at Leclerc Elementary. Teachers report that I feel loyal to this school. When you add up the strongly agree and the agree, you get 97%. That to me says there's room for growth. That also tells me that it's a pretty good number that we're going to continue to celebrate. Teachers report that teachers in this school trust each other. When you add up the strongly agree... When you add up the strongly agree and the agree, you get 100%.
Thank you. So with that background information, I just want to talk about what is a PLC a little more in detail. So a PLC is all about working together to ensure high levels of learning, high levels of learning for each and every student. It's a shift from teaching as an individual to consistent collaboration as a team across the entire school. PLC is not just a meeting, it's an ongoing process that never ends. Everything we do centers on student learning, not just teaching.
Collective efficacy. At Leclerc, we believe that every child deserves access to high-quality learning experiences. Our PLC journey began with one guiding question. How can we ensure that every student learns at high levels?
So the first step was building our foundation, and we needed a mission and vision. And we decided that we did not just want to take the one that was provided, we wanted to create our own. We also decided we did not want it to just be us here together creating that. So our whole building worked together in creating that. We spent several, several weeks in small groups that rotated, coming up with what we thought our mission, vision, goals, and commitments should be, which are on this document right here. I'm not going to read all eight of them, but I did just want to share one commitment that we are proud of and one goal that we are proud of. One commitment we are proud of is the collaboration that we have together. Our team and the entire building works really well together. We have really solid grade-level collaboration, but we also collaborate across grade levels. Our reading specialist, Mrs. Allen, collaborates with all the grade levels as well. Our support staff, myself, I'm the school psychologist, I will sit in with different grade levels and collaborate as well. And special education and general education collaborate together. So we do a really good job of doing that. One goal that we are proud of is, I know, Donnie mentioned, our culture at Leclerc is really strong, and that is our creating of a safe and inclusive learning environment. I think we take a lot of pride in the relationships that we have in our building. We've done a good job of building those, not just between the students, but also the students and the staff, and the staff and the staff as well. There's a really strong focus on those positive relationships. And one way that we have done that is by starting Leclerc families, and I won't get fully into that because I could talk about that for a really long time. But basically, two times a month, we break into our families. We have 13 families in the building, and we just do different activities together. It's a mix of different grade levels, different staff members, all of which would not normally work together on a daily basis. And I think we've seen a lot of growth just in the past year and a half of implementing that. We had a goal to have all of our students have a positive connection with at least eight adults in our building. And when we started last year, we started the year at 12% of kids, which really isn't that high when you look at it. But then we ended the year at 86%, which was a huge impact that first year. And this year, I feel like it will be even higher than that. So those are the two that were most important that we felt on here, but when you have time, you can read through the rest of that.
The second step in our PLC journey was our focusing on learning. And so this, in this step, we had a school-wide mindset shift from the teachers thinking, what am I teaching, to what are the students learning? And so with this mindset change, the students were the ones to reap the benefits truly. In the past, teachers would focus on what was being taught and follow the pace that the curriculum guide said or the teacher's manual, but now teachers are truly taking the extra time to ensure that each student is successful with the skill before moving on to the next one. With this, it helps close the gaps because teachers are not just watching, teachers are watching student learning and not just delivering information during the lessons. And this also helps our student confidence too, because they're getting what they need when they need it. And so the first step for how we did this was we identified the essential standards. And so an essential standard is the most important skill or concept that a student needs to master at the grade level. And so then what we did is we vertically aligned the essential standards. And the vertical alignment ensures that what students learn at each grade level builds onto what they learned in the grade before, but also prepares them for what they're going to learn next. So for example, you can think of vertical alignment as building blocks. Each grade adds the next block, and this just makes sure that the learning is growing on each other in a clear way without any big jumps or gaps being made. And then we created Common Formative Assessments. The acronym is the CFA, and those are short and quick tasks that all of the teachers in a grade level use, so we can see how well students master the essential standard. And the goal is to see what the students know right now, so that we can respond and give the students the help, the help that they need. And then we use the data to drive our instruction, and we use the results of the Common Formative Assessment to do that, and it just helps us adjust our teaching in the right way. And the most important part of this step is that the teachers are collaborating. We obviously have our Wednesday PLC time, but it happens in the morning, it happens at lunch. We catch ourselves collaborating at all times throughout the day. And an example of this collaboration would be, for example, if Mrs. Kuba's class did great on their Common Formative Assessment, but my class maybe did not so well, we would talk about the teaching strategies that she used that really helped her students succeed that maybe I could implement in my classroom. And then on this slide, you see the four big questions of the PLC. And so this is what we're focusing on when we're going through this process of focusing on learning. First, we identify the essential standards of what we want the students to learn. And then we go to the next step. How will we know if they've learned it? And so this is when our Common Formative Assessment comes in and we get the results. And then moving on to step three is, what will we do if they don't learn the material, the essential standard? And then we move on to, what will we do if they already know it? And so with the focus on learning, every student knows what they're expected to learn. Teachers check learning in the same way, there's no guessing. And students who need help, get help, and students who are ready for more, get more. And so on the next slide, we'll talk about step...
So with those four big questions in mind, we built systems to give students exactly what they need, whether that be intervention or enrichment.
Some examples of intervention supports within our building, we have Reading Club, and that is with our reading specialist, Mrs. Allen. She provides tiered reading support for those students who need that. We also have something called Win Time, which stands for whatever I need. And it's just time built during the day where students are getting those interventions that they need. We do try to utilize everybody within our building during that time. For example, I know I already mentioned I'm not a classroom teacher, but I do have a first-grade win group that I work with to give them some specific targeted intervention that they might need. We also have tiered support for social-emotional behavior. So sometimes students might need individual counseling of some sort, or a small group, or even check-in, check-out every day with a trusted adult within the building, so we have that. And then looking at that enrichment, we also have, Mrs. Vencevich also helps with first grade, and she has an enrichment group that she pulls, so those students who already have mastered those skills, she works with them to challenge them a little bit. In the area of social-emotional behavior, we have peer buddies within our building, so those students who have set really good examples and are a positive role model have the opportunity to help in our specialized programming and go down and play games with the students and just model expected behavior and what that might look like, and just interact with those students as well.
Along with that, it's important that flexible grouping and ongoing data checks are in place to keep support responsive and fluid. Data checks can be anywhere from just weekly or daily progress monitoring within the classroom, anywhere from that to the benchmarks that we have within our FastBridge. Like Mrs. May said, multiple people are involved in this process. It is truly a mindset that the entire staff at Leclerc Elementary embodies to ensure that all students learn at high levels. And last on this slide are some examples of ways that we celebrate students at Leclerc, and Mrs. Kuba is going to go into more detail on that.
Here's some pictures, that kind of helps show what we're talking about. But one of the things we do, we have school-to-home connection. It was created by some of the teachers in our building who wanted to make stronger relationships with the families in our community. Various nights have been organized for families to come together with our school. It's not only a time for Leclerc to share, but it's also a time for the families to share things about their traditions. The next one, you can see the girls holding up shoelaces. So if you're ever at an elementary building, you'll know that tying shoes is something that happens often. Sometimes they're mysteriously wet. So it's wonderful when a five-year-old can finally learn to tie their shoes and help others tie their shoes as well. So to celebrate, they would visit Mr. Gunter and show off their new skill, and then they earned some cool leopard laces. Another celebration is our weekly Leaping Leopard Awards. On Friday afternoons, our building stops and listens closely to who the next Leaping Leopard Award goes to. And when the students get called, they're just all excited for each other, so it's really fun to see. And it's not only something that our kids receive, but our staff members receive it as well, and they can get nominated by a staff member, even a parent within the building, which is nice. Then we have Principal for the Day, which is so much fun for the kids in the building. And it's kind of fun for us too, because we get a break from Mr. Gunter. Sorry. Attendance is a big deal at our school, because we want them there so they can learn. If they're not there, they're not learning. So if there's kids who have high attendance, good attendance, they get to wear the Every Second Counts necklace, which you can't miss. And then we also celebrate in the mornings at morning opening, who, which grade level has the highest attendance? And it's kind of fun, because what do we do? Attendance? Yeah, so it's kind of silly. And then shake families, as we mentioned earlier, families, which is a celebration for many reasons, but especially because at the beginning of the school year, we all come together, they find their new shaped family, and the kids are excited to celebrate all year long together. So this is just some of the ways we have celebrations at Leclerc. Maybe when you guys come one day, you'll be able to enjoy one of those celebrations with us.
Step four, we were sustaining collaboration. So we have the embedded weekly PLC time every Wednesday, but like others have said, we just don't collaborate on that time. It's during the morning, it's during midday, it's during our lunchtime, during our plant time. So we have, each member of us are on a different PLT, and we help facilitate different discussions. And then we can also like go to different PLTs and work with different grade levels, or I might go to first grade and work on an essential standard with them. So our school-wide mindset is that it's an ongoing process, and it also has a strong climate and culture for our building as well. And we're going to continue to work on this and get better and better at that.
So step five, this is where we see all of the efforts turn into results. So, you know, we have put all of this work into the Leclerc team, and you want to see the payoff. So student proficiency and growth increased, showing that the instructional shifts and interventions are making a measurable difference. Our Five Essentials survey data improved specifically in collaborative teachers and supportive environment, which reflects those stronger relationships and instructional alignment. And maybe most importantly, we've built a lasting culture of trust among staff, shared leadership, and a commitment to continuous learning. So these changes put us in a position to have sustained improvement, not just the short-term goals. So here is some of the data to back that up. Here, we're looking at the same group of students as they progress from kindergarten through second grade. In both reading and math, the percentage of students performing at or above national norms increased across the three-year span. So we can see a clear shift out of the lowest percentile bands, which are red and orange, into the higher performance levels, which are green and blue. This demonstrates that our supports are not just helping individual grades or individual students, they're producing long-term growth for students as they move through the system. This visible growth reinforces that our instructional approach is working. Our school climate and culture data also show strong improvement. The Five Essentials survey highlights major gains in collaborative teachers, with a gain of 15 points from '24 to '25, meaning teachers take collective responsibility for student outcomes and are highly committed to the school. We also saw notable increases in effective leaders and involved families, which strengthens the overall learning environment. These results confirm that our focus on relationships, collaboration, and leadership development have a tangible impact. The growth here supports the academic improvements we're seeing, culture and instruction are improving together.
So I don't know if I'm going to do this, but first of all, I just have to tell you how proud I am of these people who sit alongside me today. We were able to identify some leaders before we ended up going to Charlotte for this convention. And I think that one of the things that I'd like to speak to is that we were able to see leadership qualities in them before they probably saw it in themselves. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is that they're sitting up here tonight, and they're sharing the stage with me, because when we started this PLC journey, they said, I'll do it, listen, I'll do it, but if I've ever got to go talk in front of anybody, I'm out. And so I just wanted to say how proud I am of them. To conclude, I just wanted to let you know and remind you, this recognition is not the finish line. It's confirmation that yes, we're on the right path and that our best work is still ahead of us. There is room for improvement, and our commitment is that every student learns at high levels. Every student grows through collaboration, and every system strengthens because of our shared mission. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much. That was great. Okay. Next, I'd like to introduce Kyle Stewart, Associate Principal of Curriculum and Instruction, and Tiersha O'Nora, Curriculum Coordinator, to present the 2026, 2027, it's hard to say, EHS course handbook.
Good evening, Dr. Duncan and the Board of Education, and thank you for having Tiersha and I here to explain the changes and some adjustments that we've made from the, in the course handbook. We make some slide adjustments year to year, new classes, prerequisites, and we're going to go through some of those that we've made from this year to next year. So we start the year by having the department chairs speak with teachers within their departments and any changes that they want to recommend. There's new courses, course descriptions, those are pretty common changes that are made from year to year. And we start the year by having the department chairs and then ask that the department chairs get a report back to us by the end of October, middle to the end of October, so we can get working on making changes. Some updates that we're going to make from this year to the next year is in our Health and Human Services courses, which currently they're called the Health Occupations Courses, excuse me, the Medical Occupations Courses. We just have three years of courses where kids take health and medical careers, they take Medical Occupations I, and then Medical Occupations II. We're going to be more strategic in where there's specific orders, because right now there's some overlap of content within courses in our Science Department, to where if a student is taking those courses, they don't necessarily have to take the second semester of the first year, they can just continue moving on within the program. We are also adding a Sports Medicine course to this set of courses within our Health and Human Services courses. There's some minor course descriptions, there wasn't a lot made from this year. One specific course that had some description changes was the American Sign Language courses. And then the four courses listed there for the prerequisite changes, the Health and Human Service courses, we listed those as we completely revamped that, AP Calculus BC, Pathway to Stats and Quantitative Literacy, and Algebra II-A. Those are three core math courses. Slight changes to the prerequisites just to make sure that our students are in the appropriate math course for their ability. And then each year, when we have new courses and we have to go through reapproval with the NCAA, potential NCAA athletes need 16 hours of course... potential NCAA athletes need 16 hours of core classes. We have to have all of our core classes approved by the NCAA. So when we add new courses, we have to go through that approval process, sending them documents, sending them, you know, the syllabus and different documents from the course to the NCAA and wait for approval on them.
Some additional courses that have kind of been split among things is just your general band. So you'll see things like wind ensemble for those wind instruments to have a specific, separate from percussion. You'll also see jazz ensemble as a new class. It is free and open for anyone that owns their own instrument and just want to do a jam session. There are some name changes among the CTE courses. So Ag Business, Ag Mechanics has now been changed to Ag Power and Technical Systems, which is recognized by FFA and other Ag Science courses. Then you'll see new courses in Sociology and Psychology that have been added for our ICC students. Public Speaking and Debate are now going to be for-credit English instead of non-for-credit. You'll see classes like Digital Works being into the Business Department. And then you'll, the major changes, I think, overall is that Plant and Animal Science will return to the Business and Applied Tech Department under the tutelage of Joseph Biratier, who was announced as a star pupil this afternoon. And then the restructuring of the Semester Science classes. Currently, we have eight Semester Science classes, seven of which will be not co-taught, but co-supported. And then you'll have the split of the Physical Science, one full semester of Physics and one full semester of Chemistry. So just revamping what some of these classes look like overall is some of the major changes to your course handbook. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
These courses have all, can you tell us what the process is to get them to this point as far as teachers have been involved or administration or however it happened?
Absolutely. So we start with the department chairs and the teachers. We ask them, what are some things that you noticed that need to be rectified? So for example, we noticed that we had a lot of influx in those Plant and Animal Sciences. Since we didn't have for many years, or at least two years, we did not have a solid Ag Department or Ag teacher, the Science Department took those classes over. And so those classes, although well-taught, are Ag Science courses. And they wanted to know, would they be okay going back? The issue was making sure that we had the students still receiving the science credit. So as we talked to both Science and Ag to figure out what was the overlap and could all of that still occur, we kind of structured it out and we were comfortable putting it back in Ag. So yes, teachers are involved, admin is involved, the curriculum department is involved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Is there an evaluation of this to see if it's the right fit? Or you just kind of wait till you do the process again and, if that makes sense?
So when you say evaluation, are you talking about, was it an effective move? Or was it an effective process to go through? Not necessarily. Most of the time, we just take it by making sure that, one, we have the correct process for the students. Like Kyle mentioned, some of those classes that need to be NCAA, we can't offer those classes if this is not effective for the student to move through or progress. So the one thing that we did, we noticed that overlap in those Health and Med classes. And since there was an overlap, we didn't want students learning the same material more than one time. So that was one of the reasons. So it'll be interesting to see how that process comes out.
Specifically with that, the current first-year classes, Health and Medical Careers, and all of second semester, they go through the body systems. Basically, it's a intro to anatomy and physiology. Where we were having anywhere 10 to 12 students each year that were also taking anatomy and physiology and health and medical careers. They were taking Honors Bio II, which also spends a lot of time with anatomy and physiology. And so instead of learning the same courses, they can, those students that are enrolled or have taken those courses can move on in the Health and Human Services courses. Any other questions?
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Andrea Gerdford, Director of Special Education and School Support, and Tara Fox, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who will present the Illinois Score, excuse me, Illinois School Report Card. It's getting late. It's hard to talk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This mic or this mic? Doesn't matter?
It's your choice. One of you can use one and the other one use the other.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. We are going to talk to you a little bit about the Illinois School Report Card. So just to begin, we're going to talk about, we always center everything around the mission, vision, and values. And just from listening this evening, my goodness, we are really empowering each student to achieve their success. So we're going to continue that vibe as we report some of our data. So just so you know, I'm going to kind of give you a background on the Illinois School Report Card. It is an annual report that is released by the state. And it shows how each school in the district is progressing towards their wide range of goals. The report card offers the complete picture of the student and school performance in order to inform and empower families and our communities as they support our local schools. When we look at the school report card, there are five designations that a school can have. So I'm going to briefly kind of go over those so you have a good overview. If a school is identified as exemplary, that means that their overall performance is in the top 10% of all schools in Illinois. It means that they have no underperforming student groups. And I'll talk about student groups in a little bit more in depth in a minute. And then if you are a high school, that your graduation rate is over 67%. If you are deemed commendable, you are, your global performance is just under or not in the top 10% of schools. You do not have an underperforming school, student group. However, and your graduation rate is above still that 67%. When a school is identified as targeted, it means that their global performance is not in the top 10%, but they do have one or more student group that is underperforming, meaning that they are ranked in that lower, the lowest 5% of schools in the state. When this happens, it does initiate a school improvement plan, and that is a four-year cycle. And it's even if you get commendable or a higher, the next year, you are still in that status for four years. If a school is deemed comprehensive, it means that the global performance is in the lowest 5% of schools in the state of Illinois. And by having that global performance in the lowest 5%, they absolutely would have one or more student groups that are performing in the lowest 5%. And then that initiates what they call the comprehensive school improvement. Again, four-year cycle. When a school has been in the comprehensive school improvement plan, and then when they come out of that four-year, if they are still in that lowest 5%, or if you're a high school and you are below 67% of your graduation rate, you automatically get put into an intensive support plan. Again, same situation, four-year cycle. So my main part is to talk a little bit about student groups. To have a student group identified on your school's report card, you need 20 or more students that have the same demographic. And I'll show what those are in just a minute. But in addition to those 20 students, you also, they have to have data in five of the eight categories, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes as well. The next several slides, I am going to show you our schools and their student groups that we have. So this, oh, excuse me, I've gone too far, too fast. Our student groups that the state of Illinois recognizes is any race or ethnicity group. Those students who are English learners, the students who are former English learners, which means they're not receiving services at this time. Students that are identified as low-income, and then children with disabilities. And those, that category includes all students that have an individual education plan or a 504. Okay, so our kindergarten through second-grade schools. As you can see, the majority of them have one, and just two of them have two different student groups. It doesn't mean that we don't have other students with different race or ethnicity or different demographics in those schools. It's just there's not 20 of them with the number of data that we have to have. As our smaller K2 buildings combine into intermediate, that's when we start seeing the larger groups of, that we would expect to see in our air, in our district. So you can see there Cassin's, Columbus, Woodland, and Warden. And it stays pretty consistent once we get to the secondary level for Liberty, Lincoln, and the EHS. So how are we supporting each student group to ensure their success? Leclerc did a wonderful job. They kind of stole a lot of my thunder. So here's a little bit of stuff that we are, we are doing as a district to make sure that we are really trying to empower each child. We are using that data-driven discussion. The PLC work that we continue to do throughout our district, every week educators are meeting to review data that's going to drive their instruction. We have an MTSS, which again is that multi-tiered systems of support. We have a framework for that. It is established in our district. Every building has a building team that meets, and they review data on every single child in our district in those four domains, academic, SEL, attendance, and behavior. And from that criteria and that data, then they determine whether or not those students need intervention at some level. This year, every one of our schools has a school improvement plan, and they all have goals tied to academic, SEL, attendance, and behavior. I wanted to mention the curriculum. Mrs. Fox and her department continue to do curriculum reviews to make sure that our curriculum is not only rigorous, but it meets all of the standards. We continue to push for that Core Plus More model, where every one of our students has the ability and the exposure to the Gen Ed curriculum, but still providing those additional supports for skill deficit. We also recognize that there are students that will never learn according to our general education curriculum. And for that, we will always have specialized programs, specialized instruction, and alternative curriculums for them. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, I would be remiss if I didn't mention some outside resources. All too often, some of our students come in or they're facing challenges outside of the school setting. So when they enter the school, it's hard to focus on learning. So we have really done some wonderful partnerships with some of our mental health teletherapy, like Heart Wheel. We have some wonderful resources in the community, like Edwardsville's Neighbors in Need and our Glen Ed Pantries, to really support our families and our children. So that is one less barrier they have to deal with when they walk in the door.
This is me. All right. So I'm going to talk just briefly about the house. This is what you see when you get on the Illinois Report Card. I'm going to break it down by level. So to start, you will see this right here, this is Goshen. Goshen was an exemplary school. When you look at their house, they are getting scores based on ELA proficiency, math proficiency, ELA growth, math growth, chronic absenteeism. One thing you will notice that with the primary house, they do not have a science score. They do not have a climate survey score. And we also don't have an English learner progress to proficiency score. And so what happens is they, since we do not have those three categories at the primary level, those are then, these are distributed throughout these grade, throughout these other categories. Primarily, they bump growth up both ELA and math. So this is what you will see at the primary. If you look at all of our primary schools, this, their houses will reflect this with different data points. You look at the scores here, what this score here in ELA proficiency, this means we got all of the points that was needed. That means our proficiency percentage met the cut score that was established by Illinois. We look at our growth, this shows that we did not hit, we did not get 100%. So I mean, we did not meet the cut score for growth. And then chronic absenteeism as well. And to define chronic absenteeism, all that means is this is the number of students who missed 10% of the school days. And it's not, we're talking unexcused and excused absences. So if they miss 10% of the days of school, they are considered chronically absent.
And that's regardless of whether it's excused or not?
Yes, sir. So now, as you look at the intermediate house, there's a couple additional categories here that I previously spoke about. They have the proficiency scores, they have the growth scores, chronic absenteeism. But they have a science proficiency test that they take as well. And then they have the climate survey. The climate survey is what Mr. Gunter referenced in his presentation, the Five Essentials. To get full credit for the climate survey, you have to have at least 95% participation amongst your students. And so that is, this shows here that they got, they were able to get all their points. And I want to say January, February time, we're going to do a presentation on Five Essentials to update the board, the community, on how our schools performed on the Five Essentials survey. We'll do it right before the new survey comes out. This house here was Cassin's. The next one here, this is Liberty. Again, theirs will look very similar. Not many changes here. Again, proficiency scores. You see that they got all their points of proficiency for ELA and math. You look at their growth, they did not get all the points in math or ELA. Chronic absenteeism, we still have work to do there. Science proficiency, they did well. Climate survey, again, they did good as well there, too. And then the last one is the high school. The high school has a couple different categories that the other schools don't. They also take into account for their overall score, graduation rate, and ninth grade on track. And so when you look at their breakdown, they do not have the growth component, but they do, they both have proficiency. Again, you will see the chronic absenteeism, their climate survey, size proficiency, graduation rate, ninth grade on track.
Okay, thank you. All right, so taking all of that information, I am going to go through just some academic assessment data that is all sort of factored in to this, to the results from the house and the school report card. The, this is really similar to the data that I bring every year to just kind of talk through IAR and our FastBridge. So it has changed a little bit this year, but you will notice some things that are similar. And so I'll kind of talk through that as I go through, try to go through it kind of quickly, but just to update you on where our students have performed. So this is just a reminder that there are, there are two kind of district assessments. We have the FastBridge. This is our screening tool that we use three times a year. And if you think about it as like a temperature check. So what FastBridge does, it basically tells us what, which students have a risk for failure. It is not telling us that these students are failing. It is just saying that based on their current performance, they have a certain level of risk of not meeting the benchmarks for each specific grade level. So that's what we consider a formative assessment. So it's ongoing. It kind of tells you how they're doing right now. The difference between that and FastBridge, you can see in this, in this table, you know, who takes it in which categories and when. The difference between that and IAR, which is our state assessment, our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, is that that's a summative assessment, right? So it tells you kind of the culmination of that school year. At that point, if you think about it as, the difference between formative and summative to being that in a formative assessment, it gives you the opportunity then to kind of step in and say, "Ooh, here's some areas this student, this group of students, et cetera," similar to what Donnie and his team were talking about, could use some help in prior to getting to the summative assessment, which is really kind of that culmination. It's almost too late then to intervene in that moment. Of course, we use that data to then inform our curriculum alignment and inform the next year as the students move forward. So that's just kind of an overview of those two assessments.
I'm going to go quickly, this is real similar to what you saw in the Leclerc presentation as well. But just, just to go quickly through FastBridge, this obviously is not, does not factor into our school report card data that, that we get back from the state. But just to kind of show you how we use both, both things to help us make decisions. So you can see reading fluency cohort. And another reason why I put this in here is because of the changes to IAR reporting from the state. We can no longer compare cohorts of students. If you were on the board last year and in previous years when I did this, I would take groups of students from like third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, specific to IAR, to see how they did across. Because of the changes to the state, you can't do that anymore because it's not, excuse me, it's not an accurate comparison because they did not change the proficiency levels equally across each grade level. So they do not recommend doing that. They said they will not give you good information. So this just shows you what we have looked at before. So this is a group of students. If you look, these would be current sixth graders. So looking at how they did when they were in first grade, second, third, fourth, and fifth, specific to reading fluency, the reading fluency cohort. And just real simply, you want the blue to increase and the orange, and darker orange, to decrease. So you, you're really looking for performance in that green and that blue area. So this just kind of shows some reading fluency across that group of students. And then a similar, like I said, I just took snippets. This isn't comprehensive of FastBridge. There are many other FastBridge. This is your general reading cohort. Now, this is a different group of students. This would be like current ninth graders from fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So this can just kind of inform us as we see. We have a large number of our students who are performing where we want them to be in green and blue, but we're not seeing increase in that blue across the, across the board. So we're continually taking a look at our instruction, taking a look at our curriculum to determine like, how can we move even more students in general reading? Just as a point of, of reference, the difference between reading fluency, that's just that automaticity in reading. And then general reading is more of a broad reading, reading measure that includes comprehension. So it's just kind of takes in all of the aspects of reading. So these are just some examples. We are, as you know, in our first year of implementation of our new math curricular resources at the elementary level. We are in second year in middle, and our high school core courses are in review right now. So we are in the process of a math shift across the board. As you can see, we see somewhat stagnant scores, while, you know, eighty percent after first grade of our students are performing where we would expect them to be, which is within the low-risk category. We, we still want to see continued increases across. And then this is the same thing for that next group of current ninth graders. So this just shows you some of that information, just to give you an example of how we use multiple data points. So now I'll get into the IAR. These are our proficiency level performance for each grade level. So one of the things that, things that I wanted to highlight before I get into where our students performed is that, as you know, we've sent out a few communications and talked about the state of Illinois changed the proficiency levels this year. And I want to make sure that there's a, there's an understanding of why that happened. You hear a lot of information, right, about, you know, when you're, when our students are very successful. Well, it was easier to be successful this year. They changed the proficiency scores and things like that. Having our, having four schools in exemplary status is phenomenal. Ten percent, top ten percent is still top ten percent, no matter if you change proficiency scores, right? But just to give you an idea about the why behind it from the state, real generally. If, I know that that graph at the top is really hard to read. You don't really need to read it completely. If you just look at the visual, where that arrow is, is where Illinois proficiency level score was in comparison to all other states in the, in the United States. So same test, this is the NAAT test. And in order to be proficient according to state of Illinois standards, that's the score that you had to have in comparison to, if you see on the far left, not the one all the way down at the bottom, I believe that is Puerto Rico. But if you do, if you look at the one on the far left, that's Virginia, has the low, one of the lowest scores to be considered proficient. And Virginia is considered one of, the number four state in the United States for their, their performance in, in public education. So as you can see, Illinois wanted to ensure that they were reporting more accurate data on student success, both academic achievement and college readiness. Wanted to ensure that student assessment informed and that proficiency rates in reading and math, they were, they were concerned, did not reflect the actual success students were demonstrating in the classroom. They had some very specific examples of students in districts that went on to be very successful, college students who were rated as not proficient across the board according to the IAR test. And so they realized that it was just not indicative of the way students were actually performing. And then again, like I, like I showed you with that graph above, they wanted to just make sure that there were right-sized performance levels to align more closely with national standards to make sure that we're giving our kids the best opportunity post-secondary. So that just gives the kind of general information about that. So as, when the state changed those proficiency standards, they said very clearly, like I said, do not, do not compare across cohorts. The changes weren't made consistently. Compare your district to the state average, because then that will show you of all third graders in the state of Illinois, this is where your students performed in that comparison. You will also, if you, if you remember last year, one of the things when I presented this exact information that I said, which I really believe leads to this change even supporting our students more so, is that we consistently had a larger group of students than the state average that were in that approaching proficient when there were five categories. So we like had a, what I would consider a whole lot of bubble kids. We were always well above the state average as far as, if you look at the category of students in that dark orange, which is your below proficient, we've always been kind of what you see here, where the state average is higher than the number of our students who are below proficient. Yet, we had such a large number of students that were like almost there. And by changing from that five system structure to four, I think a lot of our students who were actually performing well academically were kind of pushed into that, to that proficient. So I do think that that is helpful to our students especially. And another thing to be, to note is that the state has gone through, you know, multiple changes in their proficiency scales, and it was a four, four-level scale. And then they moved it to this five and now back to four. So some of this is actually kind of coming back to where they were previously. So if you look here, I'll try to go through these a little bit more quickly. So grade three ELA, when you look at proficient and above proficient, our students performed at fifty-one point five percent in comparison to the state's forty-seven point three percent. Third grade math, our students performed at fifty-nine point seven percent proficient and above as in comparison to the state's forty-nine point six. So it's a ten points above the state average. And then in fourth grade ELA, our students at sixty-three point seven percent. And I am, I think I said this, I'm adding up proficient and above proficient to get these, these numbers in comparison to the state's fifty-one point two. And again, when we look at this, we look at all four. While I'm just reporting it this way, we look at all four categories. So we take a look at, now how do we reduce the number of students in that below proficient category? How do we get those kids that are approaching, that are right on the cusp bumped up to proficient? So that's something that we look at across the board. Pretty consistently, you will see, as, I'm going to go through them quickly, but you would see if you dive into this, which you absolutely can, both on the Illinois School Report Card and in this slide deck. You will see that we are consistently above the state average, meaning we have a smaller number of students in the below proficient and typically a larger number of students in the, of course, proficient and above. But we also want to look at moving as many kids as possible to that above proficient. And then if we go to fourth grade math, you've got fifty-seven point two percent of our students proficient and above in comparison to forty-two point four, the state average. Grade five ELA, fifty-nine point six of our students in comparison to fifty-four point six in the state average. And fifth grade math, our students at fifty point eight percent. The state average is thirty-six point five in the fifth grade math. It's kind of a shocking number. Sixth grade ELA, our students at fifty-eight point eight percent in comparison to the state of fifty-four point three. Sixth grade math, forty-one point two percent of our students and thirty-two point seven percent. The state, seventh grade ELA, sixty percent of our students are proficient or above proficient and fifty-four point five percent the state average. Seventh grade math, you've got forty-eight point seven percent of our students and thirty-seven percent of the state average. And then eighth grade ELA. So this is the one area that we are right at the state average and not above at fifty-five point nine, and the state average is fifty-six point eight. So within one percentage point there. And then eighth grade math, you've got forty-three point two percent of our students at, at or above, and then thirty-three percent at the state average. So globally, just looking at these proficiency scores, we can celebrate that we are consistently above the state average across the board, but we would never actually ongoingly celebrate without having a plan for continually moving kids when we only have in the, you know, fifty, fifty-seven and sixty-three percent of our kids at proficient and above proficient. So obviously, it's, it's something that we want to continue to move. And I can't say enough about the combination of, now, when we look at this from like a curriculum special ed combination lens, we're looking at it globally, across third, across third grade, across our buildings. When you listen to the Leclerc team, you can see kind of that next level at the building level of what they're doing. And this is all happening within those, within those professional learning communities, but also across the board in their school improvement planning, where they're looking at their specific building information and they're identifying what are the skills that we know we need to target? Because you can go very granular into this and see like, what are the specific standards that our kids are not performing as well on? And then we can go back and look at our instruction and say, are we focusing where we need to focus at each of these grade levels? So there's a combination kind of of things that we're doing, both at the building level and then at the district level, as we look at how we can support across, across larger bands. So I, I mentioned some of this, excuse me. So in ELA, elementary, so here are just some of the things across the last several years. You know, we're seeing some really good growth in ELA. We have extended use of curricular materials and ongoing instructional practice revision. We are now in, in, nearing year five of our not only new curriculum resources, but more importantly, the, the shift in our instructional practices, which our teachers are doing an amazing job of, of really working at where are the holes? And how do we fill them? How do we support them? And we're making those, those shifts, which you can do once you're in year five of a, of an implementation, because now you're comfortable, you understand what it is that you're, that you're teaching and you're, and you're making decisions based on that student learning, and you're looking at that data. So that's the ongoing review, professional development and collaboration across the board. Leclerc also talked about the implementation of classroom-based intervention win time. That is across K through five and has been for, for several years, where they are kind of catching those kids right in that moment, right? When we're seeing areas of needed support and providing that intervention for them. And then Leclerc also discussed essential standards at each grade level. So they started that work at the building level of identifying the essential standards for each grade level. We then brought that back together from each building, and we established the essential standards for District Seven in ELA. So that's the first step. I'll talk about math in just a second. And essential standards, the question is often asked, well, we already have state standards. We know what you're supposed to teach at the grade level, true. But the essential standards are those real focused standards. We still teach everything that is in the state standards, but it is literally impossible to teach every single thing in the state standards with a, with a focus and an emphasis on everything. So we're identifying which of those skills are needed as they progress to the next level. Which one is a prerequisite skill for the next thing that is going, maybe a part of IAR testing in third grade? So we know the state has identified it. So that's where your difference between essential standards and just your general state standards come in. And then math at the elementary level, like I said, we're in year one of the new curricular resource implementation. Our iReady is the name of our, of our resource. And also in year one of that instructional practice adjustment, just as an example, there's a, a model called Try Discuss Connect. It's just a shift in the way that we teach math. And so you're not only, when you are implementing new curriculum, using new materials, but you're also implementing new practices and just a change in the way, in the delivery of instruction. It's a huge undertaking. And our teachers are doing a phenomenal job of, of really working, really working hard at embracing the, the changes and, and getting support where needed, but they're, they're doing a great job. PD and collaboration, implementation of individualized instruction. This is something with our MyPath. So math, we are, we are still working through the intervention piece of ma, of math. But if you remember last year, we started the individualized instruction, which is through iReady, the MyPath plan actually puts students based on their diagnostic screening in a path where they can work individually. So a student who is in first grade and who is, has math skills well above in fifth grade, they can soar, and a student who needs additional practice. So that's, that's been a really great implementation. We still have some work to do with our, with our intervention at the math level. And then that, identifying those essential standards at each grade level, we are working through that math process this year, and that'll be completed by the end of this year. And then math and ELA at the middle school level, we are in year two of the curricular resource implementation in both of those, both math and ELA. As a reminder, those are different sets of teachers at the middle school. So that's why you're able to do that at the same time at the middle level and not the elementary. Year two of instructional practice adjustment, you've got your PD and collaboration there. And so once you're, you're through that first year, then you can start to identify the obstacles. What are some, what are some roadblocks that we're, that we're coming across with new curriculum? And how do we, how do we rectify those? If that's, if that's coaching support, if it's pacing changes? So usually you say in the first year, like, teach it with fidelity the best that you possibly can so that everybody gets comfortable. And then once you have that comfort level, you can start making some adjustments. So that's where we are now. And then the PLC work at the middle level is that identifying those common summative and formative assessments and establishing those essential standards as well. So real similar work across the two levels. And then just to show our ACT data in comparison to the state, another reason why you would only compare our ACT data to the state and not the national, even though it is a national test, is because Illinois is a state that requires every student to take the ACT, and there are many states who do not. And so only college-bound students would take it for entry into or for, you know, applications. And so you would not be comparing across the board because you have different, different students who are taking it in different states. So as you can see, our ACT scores, grade eleven ELA, are sixty-seven point three percent considered proficient or above proficient based off of the ACT score in comparison to fifty-one point seven percent of the state. And just for a reference, this is not, this doesn't come from ACT. The state of Illinois takes ACT scores and, and makes them into what they're, they consider proficient and above proficient. So ACT gives you a, a general score, right? And Illinois has set these benchmarks. And then grade eleven math, you have fifty-nine point three percent of our students proficient and above proficient in comparison to thirty-nine point three at the state average. So that's a pretty significant difference as far as ACT goes. And like I said, our math department is in curriculum review right now. Our ELA department has, they had new curriculum resources and new, new structure to their instruction right in 2020. So we're, we're, you know, in the process of getting ready to kind of just look at and review, but they have been doing a lot of work in the, in the English department. Okay, that's a lot of information about proficiency. I'm going to get into academic growth. Any questions about that first?
How do you use the, the IAR test results? Like, it goes up to eighth grade, right? So how do you use that to transition and develop? So how do you use that to transition and develop your curriculum for high schoolers? Do, is there a collaboration between the two?
So we, we do some vertical articulation for that. Like, two years ago, when we were getting ready to implement our new ELA curriculum resources at the middle school level, we brought middle school teachers and our high school teachers together, and they talked through kind of standards and, and instruction. So they do some of that. We don't only use IAR to make determinations about high school. We also use the tests that the students take at the high school level. So you have the PSAT, and you have the ACT that then kind of determine where our students are going. So it's a combination of the two. And same thing with math. We will, as the high school group goes through their review, we will do some vertical articulations, meeting, articulation meetings.
Gotcha. And then does the, the Illinois report card, the, the data that comes off there, does the assessment data, do you use that to develop your curriculum to, where, in areas where you're falling short? Do you use that to help develop your curriculum? Am I getting?
So we don't use it to help develop our, I mean, the curriculum is developed based on the standards.
Okay.
Okay, but we will, we would use that data to go back and look at, okay, so you can connect every item on an assessment to a standard. So we can, we can go back, and the, and the schools do this too, within their own buildings' for school improvement plan, and they can, and they can look at the performance of all their students, specific to the items and how they're connected to those state standards, and then say, okay, all of our fifth graders are falling down on this standard. Where is that in our curriculum? And let's look at, do we teach it too late in the year? Do we, are we not focused on it? Do we not have it listed as an essential standard? So then that's how it informs our curriculum, or informs our, our pacing or our instruction.
So what do you do when you see a low score on the Illinois report card? What's, what's the district's response when you see that where you shouldn't be? How do we fix that number?
Well, it depends on, I mean, it depends on what it is specifically. So you, you have to look at, I mean, these are, this is, these are averages across, so we have to kind of go a little bit more granular into looking at, is this something, is there something specific that our students are not meeting across the grade level band? So that's where, that's where the levels come in from like a curriculum department. We're looking at it globally. So is, is there something that's across all of third grade that's an issue? Then that's a tier, what we call a tier one curriculum issue, where if all of our third graders aren't getting it, then that means there's something wrong with, you know, the, the instruction or the time period or what have you, that they, that they're being presented that material. So that's when we would go in and make some adjustments. Like when I talked about our ELA, we look at both our FastBridge scores, and then eventually our IAR to determine, okay, we have some gaps here, and then we go in and we fill them in. And so it might be a slight adjustment, it might be a supplemental resource, so that's what we do if it's across the board. And then, like I said, our schools are looking at individual, because you might have, you know, a warden that's like, woo, our third graders, for some reason, this concept's hard, and at Cassin's, they got that, but this one is. And so then they're looking at it a little bit differently across, as far as that goes, which is why it's important for us to have essential standards across the board, because while schools have to make their, have to work on their own individual improvement, we need to make sure that every student across that particular grade level is, is being taught the same standards, then we can determine that, you know, where the, where the holes are, where the gaps are that need to be filled.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
So I got one question, or I want anything. So I understand that we can't compare year over year because of the change in the way that the, I guess, the calculation and all that kind of stuff. But if we were to look last year in sort of the district compared to the state, let's say for instance, it was a, it was a five percent difference, and then in that same category this year, it's a six percent difference, would we view that, I mean, could we see that as an improvement? Or is it the calculations are so different from year to year that we can't even make that kind of comparison as far as compared to the state from year over year?
So, I mean, our, I mean, like where our third grade students did last year and our third grade students this year, so it's different groups of kids, but at least it would do the value.
Right.
So we could potentially go back and apply this year's cut scores to last year, because what they also did was they collapsed five categories into four.
Okay.
So we would have to go back.
Well, that's my question. I was trying, if you went back.
Yeah, I mean, we probably could, we could go back and, and apply the cut scores and collapse the categories and see.
I mean, obviously, the bigger the margin, the bigger the story, I mean, as far as whether or not there was truly a, a difference. I mean, if you're talking year to year, one percent, that's probably not a big deal. But I mean, if we're talking, you know, in twenty-four, it was a five percent margin, but then this year it's a ten percent margin. Okay, that's statistically significant, that regardless of what the change was, something, something good happened there. But I could also see it going the other way, too. If the margin difference was eight percent, and then this year it's four percent, then maybe that difference is enough that maybe we need to take note. So I don't know that, I, I am fully bought in that we can't compare it year to year to kind of understand sort of where the story is.
Yeah, not year to year, cohorts of kids.
Well, I understand.
So because the, the reason they said not to, not to compare cohorts is because a stu, like, if you take a, a group of current sixth graders and went, go through third, fourth, and fifth.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, they changed the scores differently, so a kid could, could have performed exactly the same and could have been above proficient, above, you know, because they changed it differently. And so they said it just doesn't give you good data, but compared last year to this year, we could.
We still compare last year to this year on just sort of a broader scale. Okay.
Yeah. All right, so academic growth. Dr. Duncan spoke a little bit about academic growth in, in talking about the, the house. And so I want to go through this briefly, because it is part of the, part of the data that we get points towards what our designation is, but it's also really hard to, to define and describe sometimes. So the, the growth measure is a measure of student growth that compares a student performance over time to that of their academic peers. So student growth measure takes basically categories of students. So it compares a student's test performance this year to other students in Illinois who had a similar score the prior year. So it takes these group of kids who, just for sake of argument, scored a three fifty, and all the kids who scored a three fifty, we then compare them the following year to see, you know, who grew more or less. And so you're comparing, it's supposed to be comparing apples to apples, right? Because those students are, are some that performed in the same, same realm. It uses up to three years of scores, the current year plus up to two years prior, prior to spot real trends, and uses a percentile. So fifty is good, is what you would expect growth. So you expect everyone to be at fifty, they're growing as they should, and then that just leads you to, anything above fifty would be above average growth, lower than fifty, below average growth. And then again, that's compared to peers starting from similar places. So, and I took this next slide right off the state's information, and I'm going to tell you why I, I gave you that preface. So they say sixty and above is excellent growth, fifty-four to sixty is above average, fifty plus or minus three is average, and then anywhere from forty-four to forty has room for improvement, but it's not immediately concerning. And then below forty would be a cause for concern if any group of students' growth is below forty. I am not sure what happened from forty-four to forty-seven, which is why I said that, but that just gives you a general idea of what the state considers like good growth percentage.
They're almost average.
Right, it's just kind of out there in the middle of nowhere. So I included in here what this means for parents, because like I said, the growth is, is kind of hard to like, what, you know, what is, what does this mean? Does it have anything to do with proficiency? So if your child's school has a high mean student growth percentile, that's what they call this, it means that on average, students are learning and improving faster than many other academic peers. If that same, that growth percentile is low, it could signal that the school needs to adjust how it supports student learning, but it doesn't necessarily mean that students are performing poorly. They might just not be growing as fast as others who started as, at a similar level. So you have to remember, if growth is low, it doesn't mean they didn't start high. It could be a group of high students who just didn't grow a lot, like that your, your school's kids didn't grow as much, but they're already performing at proficient and above proficient. So this is, this is what makes it a little bit difficult to define, but I also think it's a good measure to determine, like, are we, are we pushing our kids at all levels to grow? And then growth data can help you understand more than whether your child is proficient. You can see how much progress is being made year over year. So there are a couple different growth measures. This mean student growth percentile is the one that I just described, and the reason that I'm using that one is because it is the one that is used on the school report card. And rather than just show you only really great data, there's another growth data, uh, growth data point that actually our kids scored phenomenally well on, but because it's not used on the report card, I didn't include it in here. But the other one would be what they consider the baseline growth data, and that takes them, instead of just taking a group of kids who scored the same and looking at them year over year, it takes the group of kids that scored the same and compares them to a different point in time. So this one goes back to 2019, which I think is really interesting, because it's pre-COVID, and it shows the growth. And if you look at our baseline growth data from 2019 to now, our growth in many areas as well over that sixty that is considered, is considered really good growth. So, but like I said, that's not used on school report cards, so we're going to look at this. So this shows our fourth to fifth grade math growth data, and you can see this fifty-eight point six and sixty-four point five, so well in the above average and even the excellent growth category. And there is not third grade math growth data, because that is the first year that they take it, so it doesn't start until fourth and fifth grade. And then if you look at six through eight math growth, growth data, again, right in that, that average range of expected growth in fifty-one point six, fifty-three, and fifty-two point five. And then the four, five ELA growth data, we have it at fifty-three point five and fifty-one point one. And then our six through, through eight, which is fifty-one point one, or fifty-one, fifty-one point one, and then that forty-three point six. So eighth grade definitely an area to continue to look at. And as we see these patterns, as you can see, that, that was also the, the area where our proficiency scores were more close to the state average and not, not significantly above. So this is a place to continue to look at, as, if we see trends in that, is it something we need to change in eighth grade? Is it cohort of kids that would need additional support? So kind of identifying what are those areas. Again, not an area of growth that's cause for concern, but not where we would expect it to be. So after saying all of that, I'm going to forecast, ignore everything that you just heard, because the state is in the process of redesigning its accountability system completely to recognize strengths and support improvement in every school. So what they are, the, the state is in the process right now of, they have gone and done listening sessions across the state. We participated in one of those where they are, they are sending out information about what their new proposed accountability system might look like, and then getting feedback from the districts on that. So their goal, and the state superintendent, when he took over several years ago, he has, he has made this clear from the beginning, that there are some systems that he wants to change, one being that designation that he changed for, for IAR back to that four system. And the second one, he talks about changing is that arbitrary exemplary being at ten percent. So this is just some of the, some of the rationale the state, you know, has for making changes to their accountability system. So they want to make sure that school improvement is for everyone. The most effective schools never stop reflecting, learning, and improving. So not just once you've fallen into a category, it being then a school improvement status, but for, for everyone. And as you've, you've heard and you've noticed, our, all of our schools are going through school improvement, um, school improvement process, and the state only actually requires that for, for schools that are in that category. The right work at the right time, so they want every school to have access to the tools, data, and support to keep moving students forward, and then with a, with a mindset that when schools continuously improve, they expand opportunities. And they also want a fair, transparent system that helps all schools show progress and be recognized as they improve outcomes. So that's straight from the state, and I'll go into this last one in just a second. But one thing, if you've noticed when Andrea was going through each of those designations, the difference between exemplary and commendable is only ten percent. Top ten percent, that's the only difference. So you're either in the top ten percent and exemplary, or you're not in the top ten percent, but your scores are very similar, you still have that high graduation rate, you still have no, no underperforming subgroups, but you're commendable. So one thing that our state superintendent definitely wants to do is, is for that not to be a moving target. So all schools who meet a performance criteria be recognized as exemplary, not just that top ten percent. So if you have more of like a cut score for where exemplary would be, and then it doesn't matter how many, how many schools get into that, if you've met the cut score, you become exemplary. So that's just one change that they're looking at. They're looking at something that, that paints a picture, so there's a profile of performance that shows strengths and areas of growth side by side. And they also want to eliminate the weights, so certain things were, categories were weighted heavy, heavier than others, so that schools could create a picture of, here are our strengths and weaknesses that will help determine designation. There are lots of other changes too, but it's not out yet. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this could again, look completely different next year. Questions?
I guess I just think it'll be interesting to see those math scores once you get the new curriculum involved at all the grade levels and things like that, because it, just is the one that stands out to me is, even though you're above the state, it's a lot lower across the board, it just seems like in most of the grade levels. But then again, as you just stated, it's going to be hard to compare one year to the next when they keep changing rules, so.
Right, right.
Good luck.
And some of these changes are really, they're positive changes. They're, you know, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, seven point one. Link is provided in this evening's agenda to locate the most recent building newsletters for each school, so please check it out. Okay, eight point one, Dr. Duncan.
So press has put eight new policies that will be on display for the next thirty days. I've sent those all to you. If you guys have any questions about those, please let me know. Mrs. Burdles, I know that you have a couple of questions that I owe you an answer to, and then we'll be putting these up for approval at the December board meeting.
Can I go back? The presentation that was just given, will that be online somewhere or?
The slides are just, yes.
That, that those guys just gave.
And also I wanted to add, we will do, once the, the new report card stuff comes out, we will do another presentation to the board and community, so you kind of know the changes.
Okay.
Any questions about the policies listed under eight point one? Okay, moving on to action considerations. Okay, approval of action item nine point two, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the disposal of rabidum recordings from the Board of Education's closed session meeting, so of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four through May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, approval of action item nine point two, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve a resolution pertaining to the board's review of executive session minutes from the period of April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five through October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed? Okay, eyes have it. Okay, approval of action item nine point three, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the first reading of policy updates that's presented and discussed during the boardwork session earlier this month.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Okay, those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, approval of action item nine point four. Dave Courtney.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-five tax levy estimate for the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as presented at the work session on November tenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian.
Yes.
Burdles.
Yes.
Sanderson.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Pedy.
Yes. Okay. Approval of action item nine point five, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and directing the Madison County Clerk to abate ad ver larm text. the Madison County Clerk to abate ad veram taxes imposed upon real property located within the Gateway Commerce Center Enterprise Zone area.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Move for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carrie, please call the roll.
Burdles.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Sanderson.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Pedy.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Approval of action item nine point six, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the resignation and retirement of employees as presented earlier.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Burdles.
Yes.
Sanderson.
Yes.
Pedy.
Yes. Approval of action item nine point seven, Dr. Duncan.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation or transfer of employees pending required certifications and professional educator license, completion of paperwork and all background fingerprint checks completed and cleared as presented earlier.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Carrie, please call the roll.
Brian.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Burdles.
Yes.
Sanderson.
Yes.
Pedy.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, ten point one. Any board members wishing to share a brief announcement at this time?
No. I, just a quick one. It's, it's not really an announcement, but it's kind of going to go on to your next one when you've got the agenda items. Back in October, we did the self-evaluation for the board and we've done a few revisions to the protocols and I would like to see that that get put on, maybe not the December meeting, but if we can do it on the January meeting just to get signatures for new board, for all board members and, and get that off the table, so. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving. And, and one thing I'd like to bring up, and I know somebody was going to bring it up last time, but I'll go ahead and bring it up this time. I was lucky enough to attend the play holes that the high school put on. It was great, fantastic. I think you even saw it twice.
I got to see twice, yeah.
You liked it so much.
Fantastic, absolutely.
So it was great. So shout out to the high school, great production, it was very enjoyable, so.
And the next one is nine to five, the musical.
It was sold out, too, so look in the mine.
Awesome. Okay, eleven point one, agenda topics, as Jill was mentioning. Anybody can go out there and sort of see a flavor of what we plan on talking about the, the next meeting in December.